I will call our work session agenda to order for the Hood River County Commission at four thirty on Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty five. The first thing on our agenda is a presentation from Portland State University on their study on annexation. Are they online?
Just promoted to a pen list.
Can I ask a question?
You've muted everything. You've muted your mic and it's hammer muted. There you go.
And Commissioner, you were, would you like me to give an overview as we start?
Yes, please.
Just a quick question. We received a bunch of material that you sent to us about a week, weekend and a half ago. Was that also provided to the public? Is that put on the website?
It was not put on the website, so it will be a part of his presentation which we can provide.
Oh, but the whole, like the memo from Jake, with Jake's description of the G S and all that, so that's all going to be included in this?
We can, we can get that piece.
I just want to make sure that everyone has all the information that we had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so as the board will recall, in October of twenty twenty three, you sent a letter to, August of twenty twenty three, you sent a letter to this Hood River City Council, requesting to discuss the potential of annexation in a joint meeting. And so last summer, we had a joint meeting where we, we went through the opportunity for annexation. Out of that was the understanding that perhaps there were phased opportunities. And we knew that we had these consent to annexation agreements that existed. And so the city and county participated to bring Portland State University on. Dr. Lazenby, who with his student carried out an analysis with the assistance of our G I S department. And so he is here to present the finding, which were presented to the Hood River City Council last week.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lazenby, thank you for joining us.
Well, it's a, it's a pleasure to join you, honorable commissioners. For, for my background, I have been on the adjunct faculty at Portland State University for eighteen years, teaching in the Hatfield School of Government. But during that time and earlier than that, I was in county and city management. I started with Allegheny County in Pennsylvania, but then worked for the cities of Vancouver, Washington, Glendale, Arizona, was city manager of the city of Sandy for twenty one years, and city manager for, for Lake Oswego for six years and retired in twenty nineteen. So I've had an academic issue, interest in these kinds of issues, but also a fair amount of professional experience as well. Our project, though, most of the, the hard work was done by a graduate student, a PhD student, in fact, Aswarya Dada. And she worked, she began work with the city's records on the annexation agreements. And our main task for this study was not a huge, you know, annexation strategy or anything like that. Our main task was to look at those agreements and to figure out what, what is the status of them? How, how many are there? To what extent are properties included with agreements in the urban growth boundary? And not, just to find out where, where things stood. You know, the, the city has more recently required, I think, required annexation as a condition of extending city services, particularly sewer service. But prior to that time, the annexation agreements were entered into with property owners that did want to have city services. That, that creates an interesting situation, though, because if now a property wants to develop, frankly, they tend to be farther away from the city limits for practical reasons. And then, so how, how do you, how do the annex work with a reasonable boundary? And, and at least an attempt to become contiguous to the city, how does that, how does that work? And these annexation covenants could be a part of that. So, starting with the, the city had collected records on property tax lot numbers and whether they had an agreement. To some extent, they also recorded information as to whether there was something called a time period waiver. And I won't get into that. Your, your county council would, would give you more information about the legal issues surrounding these time period waivers with annexations agreements and state law. But we, we attempted to get information on that. We were only partially successful, and I'll, I'll explain that in a moment. But other information we were asked to gather was whether a so-called triple majority could be met in certain areas. And under state law, cities can annex properties, but basically by council ordinance, if a majority of the owners and the land area and the assessed value of the properties, if those three majorities have, have provided written consent to annexation, the city can annex an area that meets that, that test. And so we also then needed to gather information on the numbers of properties. That's easy. But the assessed value and the, the area of the properties as well. So our, our PhD student gathered data, put it into a master spreadsheet over some three hundred and fifty records with the tax lot number. And in some cases, it required some, some detective work, because often a property that, that wanted to get city services was a larger parcel and had a tax lot number, but then it would be subdivided. And we had to track down what the subsequent tax lot numbers were for the subdivided property. She put that together in a spreadsheet and then uploaded it into the county G I S system. And, and I have to say, our project would not have been possible without the help of your staff and specifically Jake Edwards and Sophie Christensen from, from a records and G I S standpoint. They, they were invaluable. And what Jake did was basically gave, gave us a mirror image of the county G I S system, but it was a standalone database, so we couldn't mess anything up in the real data with, with our manipulation of information. He also then provided a way for us to match tax lot numbers with other data in your county records database to extract the information we needed on assessed value and, and lot sizes. So that was very useful. And then he also provided a tool that we could use our mouse and select a group of properties and for a further analysis. So again, this was a mapping project, so the, the interesting part is the maps. And I'll see if I can bring those up for you now on my screen. And now, start the slideshow here. Okay, can you see my slides? I hope so. The, the first one I'll show is just the map of the city of Hood River's urban growth boundary. And in this map, there's gray areas that do not have annexation agreements. But anything with a color, purple, brown or green, they all have annexation agreements. So right off the bat, as soon as we got this map, this is what we were very interested to see what, what pattern was. And, and again, these, these covenants were collected for several decades from the early eighties on. And, and so to see them in one place was very helpful. We did, by the way, track the date of the agreements as well. So it, it, there's, you can see in the map that there's a, you know, fairly good concentration of properties that have these annexation covenants in, in the south part of the city's urban growth boundary and also in the west part. So we, we, we first looked at the, the pattern in the south area and said, well, you know, just eyeballing it, it seems like there's quite a few that have the agreements. Would that area as a whole pass the triple majority requirement? And it turns out, it doesn't quite. And so we were able to, with, with Jake's extraction tool, we were able to pull out data from the G I S database into a spreadsheet and to make, make the triple majority calculation of owner's area and value. So when we looked at that whole area, it didn't quite meet the fifty percent plus target, but there's still quite a, quite a few in there. Another thing we were asked to do was look at potential future housing development. And I have to say, this is a bit of a crude estimate. We used the city's comp plan designation for the U G B, which is primarily R one or R two. We used that to, to sort out what the maximum density typically would be. And, and then for larger lots, lots of larger than a half acre that would have development potential, we just assumed, well, what would it be if they developed to the full zoning density? So this whole area as a whole, we estimated had a future potential of about two hundred and seventy homes. Since it didn't meet, well, one thing we needed to do, though, we, we did need to isolate areas just for calculation purposes by zone. And so there's an area just south of the city limits, shown here in the, the kind of bright yellow. It's the city's R two zone, which is a bit higher density, smaller lot sizes than the R one zone. So we extracted that area right there, shown in blue, and took a look at that. And that as well did not quite meet the triple majority requirement. Didn't have a, a lot of future housing develop potential, because a lot of the lots were already subdivided and had homes on them. But at least it allowed us to calculate the potential within that zone. But we noticed that off to the, to the southwest, in this area here, there was a fairly high concentration of properties with it. And when I go to that map, I'll explain something. The areas covered green are those that we could find agreements or records that indicated that they had this time period waiver on them. So that the green is, we, we know it does have the waiver. But the brown is areas that we found the agreements and it didn't have a waiver. The dark blue are ones that we couldn't track down the agreements. A lot of these agreements were done in paper filing era. And frankly, we just didn't have enough time to go, you know, property by property. Sometimes we, we would have to translate from a meet and, meet and bounds description to find out where the tax lot number was. So these are, these are unknown. I, I will say, though, that in our, in our analysis, usually when it was unknown and we could find the agreement, it typically turned out that the city had included a clause that had a time period waiver. But anyway, the ones that are colored do have agreements of some kind on them. In this case, there were quite a few, you know, pretty high density of properties that did have the agreement. And that, that area by itself easily met a triple majority requirement. So then we said, well, what if you combine the two areas and that still met a triple majority requirement? It would be contiguous to the city limits as well. So then we thought, well, what else is out there? And there was an area to the south of the area we've just been looking at, labeled C here, that had not only a fairly high concentration of properties with these agreements, but also some larger lots that had a fair amount of future development potential. And this is the area here. And again, there's some pretty large lots and a, a high number of potential future housing within that. And it, this area too, meant a triple majority requirement. So then we looked at the combined three areas, and it's a pretty large area. It is contiguous to the current city limits. It does, it does mean a triple majority requirement, and it does have a potential for a hundred and sixty four homes. And before I go any further, there's, there's more work to be done. And your staff and the staff for the city are very well versed in the policy, policy issues. And I, and I think the two governing bodies are as well. When, when we talk about triple majority, this is just for facts, just as background data. How the, the city specifically uses it, but in discussions with, with you, what happens with that data? It's completely up, up to you. The, both the county administrator and city manager, emphasized that the policy decisions here are up to the elected officials. But as I said earlier, I was, when I worked for the city of Vancouver back in the nineteen eighties, we had the same situation with a lot of annexation covenants. And they, they included Vancouver Mall itself and a lot of the properties in the northeast and east sides of Vancouver. And they did do a wholesale annexation of a large area based on those. But I know other cities have been more development driven. If there's been a property, let's say a property, larger property in the south end, you know, they, they may use these covenants as where to get a fairly logical boundary when and if a development might occur. So that's all I'll say about that now. We could, we could talk more about that after the, the maps are done. So there was one other area off to the, to the east that we, we looked at. There was kind of a scattering of properties with, with these annexation agreements. And we, so we looked at those. It had a sort of logical boundary with, with some streets and such. And that area as well met a triple majority threshold, although not by, by much. But that's, that's, so that was the analysis we did on the south side. And it did show that if you looked at all these areas, it, it, they would together meet a triple majority requirement. Since we already had assessed value data, we also added up the total assessed value in that area and came out using the city's general levy tax rate. It computed to a annual tax revenue if that whole area annexed at four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Another policy issue for, 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 for you elected folks is, well, that some of these areas presumably may need some half street improvements. They may need sidewalks and curbs and that kind of thing. That's typically something we see. And, and so one of the city's concerns is, well, how do we bring those areas up to city standards? In my experience, one technique that, that I've seen used is a combination of local improvement districts and then some city support to encourage those to happen. But another thing that the city could do is some, sort of a, using the idea of tax increment financing, but they could say, well, if this area annexes and brings in a certain amount of revenue, we would set aside a certain amount for infrastructure improvements. So that was the reason we, we made that calculation, but that was the extent of our financial analysis in this project. After we looked at the, the area to the south, then we, we took a look at this area on the west side of the urban growth boundary. This area called Area E, it's immediately contiguous to the city. And it had a lot of properties with the agreements. And so we asked ourselves, well, could it be, be annexed without even using a triple majority? Just it would be a hundred percent. And we analyzed that. It makes, it's kind of a, oops. Let me go back. It, it would make, can I go back? Here we go. It created an island, so you probably wouldn't want to do that. But otherwise, with the properties that had agreements, it would be possible just to do an outright annexation. And a limited number of development potential, though, is just a, just a couple of larger lots. But we thought that, that was interesting. As, as a more practical thing, we look at, well, what about this, this larger area here? Does that meet a triple majority? And there are some fairly large lots here that would have had more housing potential. And in this case, that area combined does meet a triple majority requirement and a potential of some forty nine additional homes as well. This area here is an open space. It's the Stonegate Open Space, so we assume that would remain an open space. But some of these other areas were, had development potential. So, but let me, I can, I think this is the, yeah, I'll stop sharing. And, and if I, where do I go? Did my sharing stop?
Yeah.
It stopped because I, I haven't got my big window back to submit.
It's like halfway.
All right, here, hold on. Hmm, here we go. So I'd be glad to answer questions, and I want to emphasize that this was just more of a mapping exercise to say, what, you know, what does it look like? You know, there'd be more work to be done. One of the things that the city would need to do, if they looked at any specific strategies or worked with a, a potential developer on a potentially logical annexation, they would have to pin down the, the time period waiver issue and work with, you know, the city attorney to sort out, you know, what to do with that. And so that, that would be work to be done. There are other issues, the, as, as you know, the city's got agreements with other service providers in the, in the urban area. And they'd have to look at the implications of that. And so we didn't look at any of that information. But, but I should say, I should say, having kind of been in this business, I, I find the results very interesting. It was, it was a fairly large concentration of these agreements. And as I said, when I worked for Vancouver, it turned out to be helpful and as their city grew. So with that, members of the commission, I'd be glad to answer any questions on our modest study.
Thank you very much. It is a very interesting study. Do we have questions? I thought we might.
Are you calling on me? Okay. Dr. Lazenby, just to start, so obviously as a city manager, your expertise is in just about everything. But your academic focus, is it in urban planning? Is it in the legal side of this, is it in economics? Or what, what's your current academic focus?
I, I'm teaching currently just general leadership classes. I'm teaching one on contract management. I've taught project management and for many years taught budgeting. But my, my dissertation interest was with basically the whole field of city management and the competencies that city managers need. So it covered a pretty broad area. So I, I don't study land use per se, but, but as you know, having worked in Oregon as the city manager for twenty seven years, you can't, you can't escape that. And so I, I certainly have personal experience in annexation. And, and the two cities I was city manager of are, are different than your situation. In Sandy, Clackamas County, in the city's urban growth boundary, had a policy of not allowing subdivisions of less than an acre. And so they, they really did expect that properties, if they, they wanted to get to urban level densities, would annex to the city. And, and, and that's what happened. So, and then usually they were fairly close to the city limits, and so properties annexed as they, as they developed. In, in Lake Oswego was a different matter. We did have annexation agreements. And, and there's two very large, basically islands. They're on the west side of the city bordered by I five. But they were, they could have been island annexed, you know, lotteryed by the city council. But they, for several reasons, chose not to do that. But what, what the city of Lake Oswego did is they would annex properties only when the property they wanted to annex, which created a crazy quilt of inside and outside of the city. There was islands everywhere. If you, if you've driven down like Country Club Road in Lake Oswego, you know, some properties on either side of the road are unincorporated, some are incorporated. There's bits and pieces of roads that go from city to county. It was an interesting thing. It wasn't as difficult as you might have thought, but from us city staff, we thought, this is, this is kind of strange. But I think the council felt, over the real long haul, most of those properties, they were, if they were not in the city, they were on septic. And so they figured in the real long haul, those folks at some point would probably need municipal sewer one way or the other and end up being in the city. So that's some of my professional background.
It's, yeah, that's, it's really helpful. I've just, I have a whole bunch of questions. I'm trying to figure out which ones you're the appropriate person to ask. But the story you just told about Lake Oswego, we have a different pattern of development outside of the city limits. But it, I was always told that it was rather unusual, the, the amount of dense development that we had outside of our urban growth area, outside of, I'm sorry, outside of our corporate limits. And is that, is that true? Is that, would you say now that you've looked carefully at the pattern, is it a moderately equal?
Well, it, it depends. You know, from the, from Sandy and some of those cities' perspective, it is. Because, because the, you know, when, when properties did annex to any kind of urban density, they, they, I mean, when they developed, they would annex. But Washington County, though, right, the Aloha and some of those areas are very urban and all unincorporated.
Okay, next question is about the triple majority. You, you, your, the request that was given to you was to identify areas where a triple majority existed so that annexation could happen with the city's action entirely. If, tell us about the value that these agreements have in an area where you're short of that triple majority, but still wish to do an annexation.
Well, they still have value, because it could, could be, for, for a variety of reasons. Some of the intervening properties may be willing to consent to annex and would add to that. And, and you know, one area where that happens is if the property is owned by, by a government. And so a school district or something like that. So, so sometimes you could do a combination, a kind of voluntary annexation plus the, the covenants and reach that triple majority.
Also, might you not have people who simply see the financial advantage to being within the city so that they can develop land, which otherwise they would have to put?
Right, yeah. Including infill, somebody wants to do a accessory dwelling here or something like, then you definitely need city sewer for that. So, yeah.
Could you remind me the time period waiver issue? My vague recollection is there was some magic date like nineteen ninety four, where there was a, a court of appeals and Supreme Court ruling concerning annexations previous to that date. Is that what the time period waiver refers to?
You know, I, I can't answer that. I'm just not that familiar with them. And so I would, I would, I would defer to your legal counsel on that.
You talked about the cost of bringing half streets up to city standards and that sort of thing. Is that a requirement of annexation?
Oh, no, no. And, and, you know, a lot of areas, there's an expectation from some of the residents. We, I, I live in Portland now. I moved from Lake Oswego to Portland, and I'm in a part of Portland Northeast that had been unincorporated in Multnomah County. And my particular street has no sidewalks. And, but, but the argument is, well, the folks closer in, in Irvington and, and the rest of the Cullia neighborhood in Portland, when they developed inside the city, they were, the developer was required to put in the curb and sidewalk and things. And so essentially, people paid it through their mortgage, you know, that somebody's paid for it. It wasn't the general taxpayers. And so you can make an argument that, well, you know, the city's not obligated to put those up to city standards. But again, like I said, one of the things we did in Lake Oswego is, is we, we had a program where the city would cover engineering costs, all financing costs and things like that, and offered to residents if they wanted those kinds of improvements, that the city would basically subsidize it pretty heavily through it, but using a local improvement district process. But that is, that's a, a policy decision. There's no requirement. a policy decision. There's no requirement.
And and so that's why you identified the uh the taxes that would be generated from those properties because that could be considered a source for the funds to do that, to do whatever uh uh whatever incentives you might want to encourage those properties to.
Yeah, that's right. There there would be an impact on other city services, police and such, but some portion of that presumably uh could be available for that.
I have to say, I did, I I chuckle a little bit every time the concept of bringing up to city standards comes up because I live about a hundred and fifty yards from here, and my street is chip seal, and I have no sidewalks. Uh and it's a relatively large neighborhood. Um so and it's been in the city limits for over a hundred, you know, probably a hundred and twenty years now. So it's not not a universal thing. Um.
Maybe you should talk to.
Talk to my city counselor. I I could do that. Um. The uh have you can do you have examples of situations where um or or can you suggesting, could you refer us to an example of cities that uh have used sort of a mixture of consent to annexation and incentives to uh achieve the majority necessary for a voluntary annexation? Like who's done that work?
Yeah, you know, uh that's a great question, and and your counterparts at on the Hood River City Council asked me the same one, and I I really don't know. Um I in my own experience, we did uh use that to to eliminate extent in Lake Oswego. Um but I I I I'm not familiar with any current cities in Oregon. I know they they must be there, but um that that are using that combination. Uh again, my experience was was with Vancouver, but that was many years ago. Uh so no, I um but somebody could do that research and 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 poll cities to see. In fact, the League of Oregon cities may have some data on that.
Okay, great. That's it. That's that's actually a good resource there. Um and then there was this, there was a mention of West Side Fire. We talked, you talked about the the um agreements with outside agencies. So presumably you're talking about West Side Fire and Ice Fountain Water District. Um um did you separate out um what the costs would be of annexation under that contractual commitment? Is that something that was calculated or could be calculated easily?
No, we didn't do that. But what what we did do is when we did those extraction areas that we, you know, labeled A, B, and C, et cetera, uh those went into uh analytical spreadsheets. And um we we provided those spreadsheets to to your staff and to the city staff as well. So they've got that and um uh and it could be possible to use that same extraction tool to figure out which areas are covered by those agreements and which which aren't.
Okay, yeah, I was more interested in the cost of that, but it sounds like that same information is derivable from city and county records, but it would require some uh some fancy keyboard work.
Yeah.
Great. No, that that's that's really helpful. Um I think that that's that's the end of my questions for now, so I'll also step back and let other people ask questions and maybe have some more later.
Do we have more questions?
Uh I just had a quick question in regards to the um the areas, um the areas identified. I guess I know the answer, but those can be discretionary in nature and where that were those. So so it would be the city, it would be the city's discretion um to find an area that would make um triple majority, but I would presume that there would be some what some certain amount of density before before identifying those. Is that?
Yeah, you're exactly, you're exactly right. They're completely discretionary, and we only chose them to to see how the numbers worked out, to see if there were some areas that would have enough to meet triple a majority, but they were not necessarily logical uh boundaries for an annexation. Um in some cases, the one to the south was was not even contiguous. Uh we just were looking at uh where are the concentrations of these agreements? Um you know, and and I uh you know, I think like 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 most academic studies, this is a pretty simple project that leads to other questions. Um and one would be to to come up with maybe a more of a strategic plan uh uh on whether, you know, if there's a if the strategy is more development-driven, uh you know, what are some potential directions to go? If it's more of a a goal to have the urban urbanized areas in the city limits in general, that's a different kind of strategy. And there's some interesting questions uh there, so.
Great, thank you.
I'm I'm curious, did you uh do the math on the entire urban growth area? What percentage did you reach on each of those three annexation?
For the entire area?
The entire, it just it just occurred to me that how how far away are we?
Uh that's a good question. Uh no, we didn't. I I don't think I don't think that one's actually pretty easy to do. Uh but no, we didn't uh. Uh I don't think uh uh
It's my question.
That question. Uh it would be, it would take some time because uh I go back to the map, but there's a pretty large area on the west side, but the the north of the area we looked at that apparently have no agreements at all. Um and so that that that's a fairly big factor that assessed value may not be that high there yet because a lot of it's pretty large lots, but um so so um you'd have to be a little more um you you'd have to make it a smaller area to to reach a triple majority.
Yeah, it I I just I'm sort of wondering if you're if you're looking from a policy point of view and trying to generate a package that would uh uh avoid the that 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 would achieve the level of acceptance necessary to uh to do the annexation. You know, well, you didn't have a triple majority, but you were looking to to figure out how much and how what sort of incentives you needed to put in place and and how much you were willing to spend on that. That's what that number might tell you if you're at, you know, eight percent, and boy, that's going to cost you a lot to to figure out enough incentives to discourage those folks from uh protesting the annexation. But if you are at, you know, in the twenty thirty percent, you can start to imagine the sorts of of benefits that they might see, especially some of those large lots which you described, which have very low assessed value now, would clearly have much higher value if they were uh developable. Um and uh that uh knowing that or understanding that would help from a policy point of view to figure out if this is a financially wise move on the city's part.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And and so I think in the database uh that 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 we've left with your staff, we have excuse me, all the properties that do have agreements. It's all in the database. And so it would be a pretty simple matter to to look at the whole U G B and and figure out what those percentages are.
Great, thanks.
Are there any more questions?
I'm just, what are we doing today about that? Are we going to discuss more? I understand the city council had some reaction to this. Are we going to talk about that or?
Do we have plans to do it again?
We don't have plans for a joint meeting with the city council, and so I think we wanted to present the information and then uh to understand if the board would like to request another meeting to discuss, or if there was any action you'd like staff to take as a result.
I guess I'm wondering if we as a group today have the ability to have further discussion on this. Uh now that we've seen Dr. Lazenby's uh work and his students' work. Um were we going to discuss this, or we or is this something we scheduled for another time, or is it something that just sits?
Well, it's not on our um it's not our in our action items, but if we want to spend some time talking about it now, while it's fresh in our minds, I think that's a good idea. Why don't we set ourselves about um ten minutes because how long will the bridge do um will that take half an hour? Fifteen minutes, nine minutes? Something like that, fifteen, twenty? Okay, all right. Well, we could discuss this. Yes, we have time.
Great. So I I heard some things described about the city council's reaction, and the phrase that was used was um um a lack of will. Uh and I do, but I don't haven't heard anything directly, so I I I know uh councillor Rivera is here, or or council uh president Rivera is here, uh and I don't know um if it is appropriate way for us to get
Get an update.
An update on what happened at the city council meeting.
Well, and I will look to Eric and I both attended the city council meeting last week. Um and I think Dr. Lazenby could also weigh in. Uh we presented presented to the city council, and there were a couple of questions. Um at actually councillor Rivera uh asked many of the questions, which was great. Um I think the the sense that we got from the city is that their existing policy is in place. And so um from a staff standpoint, um I don't believe there is a direction at this time to change uh what they're doing in regard to annexation. I think in regard to a lack of will, uh this annexation process would take um you know, direction from our policymakers if you wanted to do more with it. For example, um if there was a scenario coming out of this in which you saw the potential for uh a annexation by agreement or uh to encourage the city to take action because the triple majority exists. So I think I would put that out there. Or do you want Eric if he would want to add anything?
Yeah, no. I don't know that I have much more to add.
I guess if if I could phrase the question a little bit differently, um the city council sat and watched this, and I I unfortunately did not have the time to um to I was on vacation, so I did not watch that meeting. Sorry about that. Um but um at the end of it was the disposition, um yeah, that's nice, but we're done, or um or or did they say we'll talk about the city from today? Or is there any plan as to how the city council is going to or how or when the city council is going to give direction to staff uh concerning uh the next step after having gotten this very interesting information?
Uh from uh from a staff perspective, I did not see further direction. However, there may have been conversation later in the meeting, and I don't know if it's appropriate to I ask councillor Rivera in regard to that.
I don't want to put her on the spot
Okay.
right here, but uh.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to drop in. Uh that means we met our council president, so I don't think it was a lack of will. It was now we have this information presented to us. It sounds like both the city and the county staff need to get together to come up with some, like for certain areas that weren't permitted, why they weren't permitted, is that something that we can find more information of? And in addition to that, we were still open to continuing to have these conversations. Cost is something that we're going to have to figure out. What does that look like as far as those agreements for those service areas? So I don't think it was a lack of will. It was that there's still more information that we need in order to make a mutual decision.
Okay, great. And so uh I mean, I looked at this, and I was actually surprised that the number of of you know, I I know that the number of units is is kind of a fake metric there, but but just even even as a proxy for something else, I was surprised at how large the number was you could achieve with an actual triple majority. I I I expected that number to be very small, but that uh you would be close enough that you could entice people into accepting the annexation. But it looks like there's a a a real possibility here of getting some potential housing out of this that um I I I guess I'm confused because I I thought the the I, you know, I was on vacation, so maybe the tubes, you know, information are a little narrow, but I I thought that the the uh the answer from this was that there wasn't very much to get out of out of the regions that have triple majorities, and it looks like to me like there are, and did I did I make that wrong or?
No, but the way to get those majorities also depends. It's kind of like voting districts. It depends on how you cut it, right? So if um so it looked like we had some that weren't up to fifty percent, but if we sliced it differently, we could get there. So that's one of the questions is which areas are the most important? And how do you want it to slice it up so that they could all be above fifty percent? Right, so that would be one of one of the decisions. And my question also would be, what does what role can you define exactly the role that the county has in this? Is it a city-driven process?
Uh annexation is a city-driven process. Um however, there is a method by which we could do annexation by agreement. Um and so we would want to explore that. I would want to offer the caveat um i- in my conversations with city manager, uh Abigail Elder. She would identify that um their staff has a work plan, and so understanding this information is wonderful, but there's also a work effort that goes along with it. And so I think she would go back to her city council and and say, if you're identifying this as a priority or a work project, we need to work it into a
We're not talking about this year's work plan, though, right? I I thought that this was all the preamble to a discussion about next year or or three years or five years from now, right? Uh I I don't think anyone, maybe I'm misunderstood, but I don't think anyone expected that that this study was going to be done and annexation notes would go flying. Yeah.
Annexation is definitely a tool within the toolkit for for housing.
Right.
Were any of the studies, it looked like they were all west of Twelve Street? Is that correct? There was nothing east of Twelve Street?
There was a piece back in the area off of Elliot.
Okay, that was, there was that one piece.
Yes, really small.
Okay.
It's a handful of parcels there.
Okay, and did it have its specific percent on its own? Or was it part of a larger group? I'm just sort of curious about.
I don't think it was in any of the the groups that.
Oh, okay, right. That's what I meant. It wasn't any of the groups that were analyzed.
We've heard about that because that's where the failing septic is, that where the requests came to us to help.
Correct. And I'm wondering if that was part of any of this, because I didn't think I saw it in the numbers. So it's there. But it wasn't in part of, it wasn't in any of the um areas that.
I think that's a good area that might fit. I think we talked, we talked about the Lake Oswego area where eventually your septic systems will fail, so they'll have to.
Correct. I just wanted to be accurate that that wasn't actually part of what we just saw, because none of the numbers applied to that, as I understand it.
And Dr. Lazenby, you did the groupings around the specific areas, but not the area off to it would have been the right of the screen, which was a small strip on Elliot. Um was not included, per my understanding.
The very.
In a fact, I could weigh into with the data in the database, it's very easy to extract particular areas. And I and I think that's something that the city staff certainly were very interested in. If they had some issue, uh they could use this extraction tool and answer those kinds of questions uh fairly easily.
So it sounds like your um your graduate student could uh probably get a job with uh many of the state legislatures right now that are trying to gerrymander their their congressional districts. Very timely.
I think they have different criteria there.
But it's the same scientifically, it's the same uh same techniques.
I'm not sure they have a
The CNGS tools.
Sure that you can extract it there from their from their title reports. What their voting would be.
You'd be surprised.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Do we have more questions? From anyone?
I just like a comment, it's I'm excited to see that we have these tools in place now. It it sounds like uh we don't need uh to uh ask Dr. Lazenby or his student to do the work at this point because we now have the tools and the toolkit with which we can do further work uh now that we start to understand this. Um the the work to extract, the work to find the records about um these uh uh I guess they're originally called waivers of remonstrance and now waivers, consent to annexations at the term. And so I know that that's very time-consuming work to do at a at a level that you take to the bank or, you know, in this go where you actually can issue uh an annexation order. Um was there any discussion, I guess I'm looking in the wrong direction, was there a discussion about um how much, how close? How good was the job that was done on identifying these documents? Um is it like, is it sort of a ten percent back of the envelope? Or or are we ninety percent of the way there, or is there any way for you to know?
One of the things I I would note is that um you know, further uh analysis would need be needed to do that kind of more legalistic uh look. Uh I think the city's records were pretty good as to the presence of the agreements, but they may have missed up. Uh and they kept track of it in, you know, kind of in a separate database. Tracking uh tracking down the written agreements, and again, some of these date back many years uh would take some effort, and our recommendation was not to spend a lot of time doing that unless you have some specific areas you want to look at, because it it is pretty time-consuming to to try to pin those down. So I I I think to answer your question, this is more of a uh you know, first first impression, but does need further verification.
Well, it also seems as though if that's the case, and you've got basically a
Well, it also seems as though if that's the case and you've got basically a fit over the whole area and we are at above fifty percent, if we looked harder, we find more rather than less, right? So there's, these are the ones that really do exist and there could be more, but it's is it pretty sure that? I guess we have to understand the time time period waiver before we say this for sure. But the number of people, the number of waivers could go up, but probably not down.
I can give you an example of that. So when I was mayor, we went through the process of annexing the property that the Columbia Boat Hotel sits on. And they were fighting it and they said that their that their waiver was pre nineteen ninety-four or whatever the year was. So so we couldn't force them. And staff went through and dug up all the records and found four more consents that had been signed by owners of that property since that day. On that property, and that was just one property.
So that answers my question. Thank you. Okay. Yes, I think that we will discuss this again.
And one of the recommendations that Dr. Dr. Lazenby made is just to remind us that they have graduate fellows. They have and that would be a potential project. And so that's an application process where we could bring somebody on board for that specific purpose. And it's a graduate project. So that could be an interesting next step as well.
All right, and I would like to point out that we're getting even, we really appreciate what our own planning department and GIS department have been able to do to make this happen. I mean, if this couldn't have happened without, it's just one more instance of how well our planning department on our GIS department function and how helpful and how competent everybody is. So thank you.
And please thank your students for us.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. And our next presentation is the County Bridge Capital Improvement Plan and Detour Options. Well, we're already out there with detour options, so we must be optimistic about.
Oh, I thought that was detour if the bridge fails and nothing's done about it.
So nothing is at that point at this time. So maybe I should start with that. However, so we had. Okay, thank you. So the county got a consultant to do an evaluation of all of our bridges. ODOT does inspection of our larger bridges every two years. We don't have inspections of the smaller ones. And so we had them do the inspection of the smaller ones and then we had them aggregate all of the information and present it to us on how we should proceed going forward. And it's basically a way for us to determine, yeah.
Pretty tricky to share your own when you're letting them zoom in.
I'm ready. Okay, um, I'll just keep going. So just a background, what inventory we have, we have eighteen bridges that are classified as the larger bridges. They're called National Branded Bridge Inventory. We can get federal funding for those. Those are the ones that ODOT inspects for us. We have nine bridges not listed on this list. And here it is. These are the ones that DEA had inspected for us. And then this has always been the case, it's just information I wanted to include, we have two bridges throughout the county that are load restricted. One is on Wyeth and then the other one's on Posh. There are detour routes for those. And so currently, it's not really an impact to our county. Right? So some of the maintenance recommendations, seven maintenance recommendations were considered urgent. So ODOT says we should do something about this within six months.
And they'll be back in four years to make sure that we did.
And traditionally, we have not. I'm just going to say that at this point. Seventeen maintenance recommendations state that they're high, which means need to be fixed within twelve months. And then sixteen sixty-four routine or medium. Those need to be done before ODOT comes back and inspects. And then six are recommended for monitoring. So if there's a river that goes underneath it and it's a high-flow event, we should go check the bridge to make sure it's standing or it's not concerning, we shouldn't have vehicles on it. So. So budget impacts, what's this mean as far as budget? So currently, we're transferring two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year from our road fund. We're transferring it to a capital project fund. So it's it's really used to create that match if we were able to apply for federal funding or to replace bridges on their own. It comes from the road fund that can only be used for roads. It it isn't for, it's not our general fund that can be used to replace something else.
And that's gas tax money, right?
Gas tax and vehicle registration, correct. So this program is assuming that we're going to spend two hundred thousand of this every year, plus or minus. And then this work can be done by both county maintenance team and then additionally from contractors. For the ones that have been identified as county maintenance, we're starting to work on those. And we should have those done within that twelve months timeframe. And then hopefully we'll be able to keep budgeting for replacement or larger scale projects, even with spending that two hundred thousand every year. So next one, this is the one that why we have detour routes. We have four that are not recommended for maintenance. And the reason that they're not recommended for maintenance is either we can't get them. One recommendation is handbrake, the railings. We can't get that to a standard. So it doesn't make sense to put in the money and the effort to get a substandard thing that we're just going to get called on the next time that they inspected. Other ones are, they're at a point where they they're just deteriorating. We we let them go too far at this point. Four bridges are Fur Mountain Road at the East Fork Irrigation Ditch. This is the one that's going to be replaced with the East Fork Irrigation District project. Fur Mountain Road over Neal Creek, that's right at Highway thirty-five. Later in this, your agenda has a consent to apply for the RTA grant.
That's the one that we just received in the supplemental agenda.
So we are working, we're hopeful that we're working towards replacement of these. And then Thompson at Neal Creek near Highway thirty-five and then Wyatt, which was the previously load-restricted one, it's also slated. And then I I identified.
Is it still load-restricted? You said previously.
Previously and still.
Okay, it's already been identified.
So nothing is newly load-restricted. And then I just identified the two that were weight-restricted again. And then Wyatt is both on the non-maintained and on the load-restricted. Posh is one that we're hoping to get unload restricted. Next one. So it put detour routes on on each of these that are considered not maintained. And I did that because we don't maintain them and they fail. We're going to have to detour around it.
I can ask a question real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I apologize because made a bad joke, but I'm known for that. So 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 a a bridge that has a recommendation for for some sort of repair and there's a timeline where it's inspected, heaven forbid, we didn't have the resources and or the time to get that done. What what would be the next next step? Slap on the wrist, closure and detours? What would that look like?
We haven't gotten to that point. I don't know that there's been anything as far as penalties associated with not repairing. The penalty is the bridge fails. Somebody is or isn't on it and then it's catastrophic and the the challenges of that.
Yeah, I'm certainly not advocating for that. I just need, just want to understand what that.
And then if you don't maintain bridges, it's harder to get funding for those. Like if it does fail and you didn't put any money into it, no one's going to come help you because you didn't put in the money and effort before.
And so it's going to cost more to start over.
So a couple of years ago, the county made the decision to revert a bunch of roads from paved roads to gravel roads because it didn't have the funds to keep them patched and determine it would be cheaper to do this conversion than it would be to try to maintain them and fail at maintaining them. Isn't there, have you looked at what the value to the community is of each of these bridges and whether there's the option of simply saying we can't afford that bridge anymore?
So three of the four bridges are east of Highway thirty-five. One of them slowed restricted and then three of the other ones, and you'll see that a little bit more in another map, where all of the detours go on to one of these other bridges. And so what was identified was the first one would be Fur Mountain Road, the irrigation ditch. And I put them in order on these maps. The second one was Fur Mountain Road at Highway thirty-five. We have not been successful in receiving local bridge funding because there's so many detours. But now that we identify, you know, that all of these are in the same condition, all of the detour routes are constrained as well. Wyatt is a there's detours and it, you know, it accesses federal lands, but it doesn't access homes. So that is something that we could consider. However, we'll likely be applying for, we're going to be asking to apply for a federal lands access program funding if that becomes available for that bridge. Because that funding would be a good, good for that source.
But I think that's a good example of a situation where you've done the analysis that in terms of our residents, that bridge isn't servicing homes or farms, but it is servicing federal lands. So if we can't get federal funding for that, that might be something that's on the cutting block.
So.
Thanks.
I I kind of went out on a limb over the bridges today a little bit. I called Cindy Lehman by the watershed group and she there may be some of these bridges, maybe that potentially are affecting fish habitat. Is there a resource there maybe that we can work with her on?
There is. There's other things that we would like to work with her on. But definitely giving her this information or giving them this information and determining if these are things that are, can we prioritize, we've already had that that conversation of can we prioritize bridges that suit both of us? I don't know if the ones that we have as failing or needing to be repaired are things that are the same. Yeah.
Maybe tell them, Neil Creek with all the habitat.
Yeah. So that is something that, I mean, anytime that we're doing work over a waterway is something that we would definitely be bringing them in on.
Sure, I was just thinking money-wise.
Absolutely, and different sources of funding always help. Yeah.
Great.
Great. So this one's the worst. I would say if the county was not getting this replaced with the East Fork Irrigation District project, that we would want to prioritize getting this one fixed. So good news. Okay, next one.
The good news is that we have a funding source.
We have somebody else that's going to do it for us. Yeah.
Which is.
East Fork. Yeah. This is the Fur Mountain Road near Highway thirty-five over Neal Creek. You know, notice the detour route is Thompson. There is another one on glass that doesn't have one of those bridges, but when you see the Thompson route, it's also going to use Fur Mountain. So. And this is the Thompson one showing essentially the same same detour route as the the Fur Mountain one. Next. So this is Wyatt. There is, it's currently load-restricted. It it really is accessing federal lands. I think there is one home on there. So yeah, this is, this is one that I think we've rated as the the last of the four to get replaced because of those reasons. However, the federal lands access program is a great funding source for this bridge and which is why we're going to prioritize that because it can't be used for the other three bridges.
We don't yet know if that's going to be reauthorized, right?
Exactly. We're just crossing fingers. So and and then so just to highlight the other weight restricted, this is Posh. This is one that we do hope to get replaced or not replaced, but repaired and get it unload restricted. It also accesses that east side of Highway thirty-five. So all of the ones that are load-restricted are currently east of Highway thirty-five. All right, is there another one?
There are.
Oh, great. I didn't put those. So my ask is that we adopt this plan and we move forward in trying to find funding and to get these ones that are in non-maintained state replaced. And then approve grant funding when it's available. The RTA is coming to consent. That was on the supplemental agreement. And then slap if that becomes available will probably be September, October. And then the continuing the budget moves from the Public Works Road Fund of two hundred fifty thousand to this capital road fund so that we can continue this work and be successful. I don't know what the next slide says. Now I feel better.
So we, you know, I'm working on another bridge replacement problem. And we're doing similar sort of calculation. I'm wondering, so certainly I think you've done a great job. And David Evans has done a great job in preparing this facilities plan. So I I've got no problem moving forward with that. But what would be interesting to identify is if we know the length of the detours, which you just provided, we know the traffic, which I don't know if you know, that can be translated into an economic value of the bridge in terms of a benefit cost analysis. So it might be, if that's something that we can generate easily, maybe Jake can sort of magically make it appear. That would be, might help you in your flap grant or anything else that you're trying to do. Right, so I'm just saying there are models for developing economic value to the community of these things. That those same models would be helpful to us if we had to make a decision that we simply couldn't afford to maintain twenty-seven bridges, is that? Twenty-seven bridges in the county that this is a twenty-six bridge county. We would need that information to make a decision like that.
Do some of the grant applications require specifically that or it just would be helpful information to make our point?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to make our point for Wyatt, the federal lands access program. There is economic drivers as part of that. I don't know if we can necessarily show that on that bridge. There are other roads that we're also looking at that same program. There are other roads that we're also looking at that same program. Um. And just applying for them all that might be successful. Um. But I think it's a good story to tell with the current administration.
And like I said, it will also help us. We have to make decisions in the future.
Hopefully, we can keep making the decision to do them a little at a time and they won't fail at any time.
Yeah. I mean, that we didn't know the information before. We know it now.
Hmm.
We're gonna keep working to make sure that we aren't in this state that we. Uh, keep working on the four bridges that we know about and keep maintaining the ones that we did with that.
I guess. From uh I didn't say anything during during the gap. Um, so from a a liability point of view, um, the state. And the ones the state reviews, the state has told us. They give us a. Was it for your timeline?
Two.
To your to your timeline. Okay, so they give us.
Recommendations.
Timeline and we have to. Take reasonable action. Is that the? I guess I'm looking at least now there there's there's some term that of something that we have to do. Obviously, we can't magically know whether a bridge is going to fail, but we've been. But I noticed that there is a situation that needs to be remedying remedied, so we have to do something. Or we have to make some, we have to consciously make a decision on. Searching for.
And that's part of why we're adopting this plan is to move forward with the knowledge that we. Are not gonna be maintaining these these four bridges. Because we're not gonna see a measurable impact on those four bridges. So the really the. Not maintain means that we need to replace. These are the four bridges that we're gonna actively work to replace.
But we're not obligated to close them tomorrow, for example.
Correct. They are in perfectly fine condition as they are. Just the repairs. Won't be a substantial repair.
We'll save that repair money to fix. To replace them.
Yeah. Okay. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I was wondering if you can open up the language.
Typically, if you're provided notice, you you're given an opportunity to cure. Uh, and so I would think that it would be, yeah, going back to the plan and identifying what steps do you plan to take within what timeframe?
It seems to me we're not ignoring the.
Right.
The the information that we have, but we also don't have the money magically to fix everything. So I think we're. I I'm not uncomfortable from a ethical point of view that. We're ignoring a problem, but I I. It would be helpful to have some understanding of.
The ramifications of the of.
Whether we are in fact meeting our legal obligation.
Has the state given us notice on these or was this initiated completely?
So the NBI bridges, uh, we have been given notice. Um. But I do have to say that we aren't, we haven't been very successful in. Completing the work to this point until we have this report, we weren't as diligent with the repairs. As we should have been.
And and what triggered the initiation of the report? Was it? Being put on notice or was it just it's a good idea for us to do? We needed to do.
Good idea that we should do and we should have the knowledge of what. What the condition of our bridges are and a recommendation for our maintenance team to be able to. To go forward and know what they're doing is gonna make a measurable impact.
Great. Thank you. Are there any more questions?
I just wanna know how you're gonna find the time to get all that done too with your proof.
Uh, they're already working on the signs now. I think that uh once striping is done in a couple of weeks, they're all gonna take the the month off. For hunting uh and vegetation removal is part of that. And then uh that's a great question. But if we don't know the information, they can't be targeted. And so that's part of the reason of why is targeted approach to that.
I'm serious. Follow up on that though, uh with. ODOT's recent step reductions, uh is ODOT funding bridge inspection program or are we going to be stuck without that program in the future?
Um, great question. It is federally mandated that. Somebody. And uh in the state of Washington, local jurisdictions do that work. Um. I hope not. I don't wanna take on that liability. Even if. We would have to consult it out likely.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will pause until we start our meeting at six o'clock. So we'll take a break. I will call the business meeting agenda. I'm sorry, the business meeting to order for the Hoover County Commission at six o'clock on August eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Are there any additions or deletions? To the agenda? No. Any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest? Do we have any public comment in the audience? Or do we have any public comment online?
No comments online.
All right. Well, great. We can. Start with our. County administrator report.
Good evening. I have a couple of updates for you. It has been a busy uh month. Uh, the first item was just to report back. Uh, we had a stakeholder meeting. Uh, last Monday, um, and Commissioner, you or you you might have been uh going to report about this, so um. I just wanted to note that um. It was a great meeting. Um, we had a uh great showing of um emergency responders. Um, and agencies from both sides of the river, um I eighty four and uh Highway fourteen. Um, the bulk of the uh meeting, I would say, uh was given to ODOT to talk about um. The issues that would arise uh due to their current funding situation. Um, but we then broke out into groups to talk about um local roads, needs, uh communications, and then emergency response. Um, and when we all came back together, there was the agreement that this was starting a process. Um, and that those uh uh groups would be uh organized and the idea is to create a book of procedures that can be implemented. Singly or as a set in order to achieve particular outcomes. And um Charles reported that these are broadly around three lines of effort. Uh, reducing traffic coming into the county and facilitating the flow of traffic out of the area. Creating local traffic flows to reduce congestion within specific port and downtown areas. And prioritizing critical routes to critical infrastructure, uh such as hospitals, fire stations, et cetera. So. It was a a great start to getting everybody together. Um, I think uh what I took home was um. The. The intermingling of all of our communication networks is just really paramount. And so um. Yeah, when we talked about people not in the room, uh public information officers, we had one from Providence, and I think she highlighted the need for. That communication. So I think that was a really good start. Uh, the other item, uh Commissioner Babett, I um didn't know if you were gonna report on the. Courthouse facilities meeting, but just wanna note that we're continuing to whittle down our. Options and um we're set to get the steering committee back together in early September and hopefully have a. A report on the final recommendation for the September meeting. Uh, that's our hope. Um. I identified another number of administrative issues uh follow up from the last meeting. Um. We had the um. Question about management control uh. Procedures uh coming out of the budget process. Um, and so at the July meeting, I recommended um the three pronged. Plan to uh enter into the process to do the organizational assessment, which would have. A financial analysis. And my thought is that we can bring that back to the board. Uh, look at where we are year to date and understand at that point if we're gonna make major changes. I'm always over optimistic on how quickly things can happen. Um, so my hope is is that we're approaching that pre-budget process. So this winter. Um, is my hope. Um, and so I was, I would just um. Uh, put that back in your lap if you believe that that is a a good point of demarcation in terms of. Checking in and understanding if you wanna do anything further with this year's budget. So I put that out there for you. Um.
So what date did you suggest?
Six months.
Mm hmm.
End of November. July, August.
We're we're putting together the request for proposal that would um. Be due back and we'd be putting a contract together in October. So my hope is that. Um. Within the next ninety days, we're. Getting to some understanding of. Some quick uh changes that we could make.
From ninety days from now?
Or ninety days from October?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Anything else?
Um, the other item, uh I put some information on my report in regards to the tax refund. Uh, the question that was asked about um the source of the tax refund. Um. And the other thing uh was just a reminder in regards to the timber deposit interest fund. We had that discussion last time that it would be good. To put that on a future agenda in regards to policy for the use of that fund. Um. I have a letter that I walked in uh that is a request from the National Association of Counties. To provide a letter of support uh for the bill for the surface transportation reauthorization bill. Um, so I would ask for your action on that uh this evening. Um, and we do have. Uh. The TC's here who has a quick update on the carbon programs if that is okay for this point in time.
When it comes to the letter, are we uh adding that to? Did that get added to the contention? Now that came in later.
It came in.
So do we need a separate motion?
Uh, if you uh have reviewed it and you, yes, if you would.
Or is it okay if we all just weigh in?
Yep.
On whether or not it looked like um a good idea to me.
Yeah.
I I think we should have a motion on it, though.
Okay.
And I I do have um I have questions on a a bunch of the issues that Alison talked about. So can I ask those before we go to the next section?
Yes.
And um the first one, emergency response meeting, it sounds like you had a great meeting. What I took from what you said, it sound, the way you recounted it. It sounded like everyone was there. For the right reason and is taking it seriously and is eager to solve the problem. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a very fair statement. Yes.
So that's really, that is really excellent to hear. Uh, the next thing on the budget discussion, um. I guess I. I think six months is too long.
Okay.
For. Uh, I think I'm talking about a different piece of it, though. I see Sher is getting worried about what I might say next.
No.
What I would like to do is I would like us to have an agenda item uh relatively soon. Uh, to have a discussion as to whether we put in place a hiring freeze so that all hiring. Uh, rehires or replacements, et cetera, have to be.
Yeah.
Uh, approved by the Board of Commissioners. Um, and I don't. I don't know if I have agreed and done that, but I I'd like to have a. Oh, agenda items so we can talk about that.
So so I was just gonna, I was gonna say that that was my recollection of the discussion we had last time, not necessarily making uh structural changes based on a six month. Um. You know, half a year into the budget and if we were gonna have to make adjustments. That's.
I think that's how I remember it. Both are parts of it.
Sure.
Yeah. And uh, but again, I don't think we're away six months for that.
Okay.
The piece that I brought up.
Okay, so I'll have a discussion then with Sherry in regards to um. The coming out of gear in and uh if we do that at the September.
And then the policy on the timber interest reserve account, I think that's that's kind of interesting discussion. I think that can go anyplace. I I I think staff is gonna need some time to come up with. Um. The wisdom that we're going to need to make a policy decision on that. So I I I wouldn't think that that's something that we could talk about nearly as soon as. As simply uh taking some. Actions which put. The decision points sooner rather than later because those will have the biggest impact. On the on making sure to shove easier next budget cycle. Okay.
Yeah. Perfect.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we go to some already?
We have.
Here you are.
I think that was gonna.
Yeah.
That was.
Oh, excuse me, right.
Well, here, I I don't got more questions on this, so I I need to get those questions off the table.
Sorry, guys.
Thanks for having me. Uh, give me a moment here. Uh. Like just just a quick update on the carbon project that the Climate Trust is working with us on. Um, they've made some good progress this summer. They did the field verification work. Of the inventory uh that's been installed and and that passed. So that's good. It's a big step. They're pretty relieved when that came through. So uh there's still got quite a bit to do in the overall verification process between now and. The end of December. So they're hoping that will all be completed by then. That's not, I probably won't have as much to do with that. Um, but I've had fairly frequent corresponds with them uh pretty much once or twice a week. Various questions, things that come up. Uh, another point to that, though, is they are starting to do pre-sale marketing. And so um with potential companies that want to. Acquire or purchase uh carbon credits that will become available for this, specifically our project. And so uh. There is some interest. Um, although overall, they would say the interest. For. Credit programs right now is a bit of a lull overall, but there is some interest for our project. So that's good. Um, so just moving forward, um, we I wouldn't say there's any alarms going off at this point. It's it's moving forward, so.
I'm sorry, when you say bitterswell, I mean, you say no alarms. Uh. The low you're talking about, I assume is based on the political climate.
I don't know if that's the cause necessarily. I I wouldn't assume that that's maybe the only thing that could be factoring in. Um. Uh, but I would just say generally in talking talking with the Climate Trust. Um, you know, if we compared it, so when we entered into our agreement, market was at a high, kind of an all time high, and it wrapped up pretty good over about a five year period.
Right.
Now we've come down off that bit um for sure. Um, pricing right now as of today. The good news is we're not selling all of our credits at once. We just kinda wanna get some started. And the agreement we have actually requires them to make an effort to sell some of the credits now. Uh, within the first uh couple of years. So. Um, they are, I guess all I'm saying is is they are working diligently to hold up their end of the bargain. Um, and so that that's occurring and that's good. We're still talking about fairly large sums of money. So. Just to get the ball rolling and feel like there's revenue coming back for the commitment that we're making that actually started in twenty twenty three. Um, it would be nice to see some revenue. Uh, forecast on when that revenue could start to come in. Um, once the sales are completed. Looking to get the sales completed in the spring of this next year. And. Potentially, we could see that revenue e- either at the end of this fiscal year, potentially May, June. Or it could swap or leave it into the following, into the summertime next year. So. No, don't quite know for sure if we're gonna get it this fiscal year or. Early in the next fiscal year, but at least that's the direction it's headed right now. Um, I was kinda poking a little bit to try to make this happen. So it happens this fiscal year um last week, but again, don't have control over that.
It would be kind of interesting to know what what their thoughts are on um whether it's just a law based on. In inevitability of. This happening, like say, all time high and how much of it is a a difference in. Policy because, I mean, the current administration has made it very clear that. Uh, carbon emission and green energy is not nearly as important as the previous administration, so.
Yeah, I mean, there could be some effects, but there can also be some counter effects of that same thing. And so. Uh, we talked a little bit about that in general thought terms. Uh, I did, uh, I said in the last couple of weeks with the Climate Trust because I was curious myself. Um. But I I think they were interested to just kinda steer the conversation away from that and just kinda look at the bigger broader picture. And there are other factors.
So do we, could you ask them questions about uh how carbon credits have historically tracked recessions and things like that? I don't know if there's enough history, but. It'd be interesting to know what the economics of the pricing, i- i- if there's any uh. Solid work done on the economics of pricing of carbon and what what things affected. So. We could feel a little bit more comfortable that, yeah, it doesn't have to be. You know, the the low can be from fifty different things.
Yeah, I could follow up and try to give them a little more info or insight on that. Yeah, I could follow up and try to give them a little more info or insight on that. I I've tried to do a little bit of research on that independently, but. I can try to do that with Climate Trust specifically to get to see it. They like to be a little bit protective of pricing. Work in conversations as well, kind of proprietary insider knowledge, I guess you could say.
I don't think those are pricing questions, though.
No, not specifically, but.
Some reasons.
Does a recession, is it cyclical or counter cyclical with a recession? Or is it unmoved by recession is a reasonable question. And they may have a reasonable answer that there haven't been enough recessions. When carbon credits have existed to know, but I'd like to at least ask that question.
I'd be glad.
In terms of their caution about sharing pricing information with us, it it, I have to believe that every. Client of theirs is skittish about the language about carbon and. Windmills, et cetera, that's coming out of the US government. So it shouldn't be. Too difficult for them to understand that they have to say something to us. Which we.
Regarding that.
Are in an exposed position at this moment where we're. There is a meter running on the costs, which we have to share with them in certain circumstances. I forget about all the different off ramps, but. There is a meter running and. It's not crazy for us to say, are we doing the right thing still, given the direction of things we're taking?
Right. I mean, they they, I mean, there is an off ramp we we could take. It would cost us.
Yes.
To do that.
We don't have any policy information now that lets us make a decision on that. And that's, I think, what Commissioner Weathers and I are. Kind of poking out a little bit.
Well, I mean, right now we're, you know, we're proceeding and the Climate Trust is proceeding to effectuate the agreement. I think. You know, I guess that that it sounds like maybe it's almost a separate related conversation that that's something commissioners want to reinvestigate.
I think that you always have to be asking questions, especially when there's radical reorganization of. Government policy and 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 worldwide economics.
So. What percent of the total carbon credits are we talking about selling at what? Rate? So are we gonna be selling, for instance, if we are gonna sell some of them in the next two years? What percent? I think I did see maybe.
Yeah, I would say it's an hour between ten and fifteen percent.
So the for the first couple of years.
We're looking to sell ten fifteen percent.
In the next.
In the first issuance.
In the first issuance, which is the one that's that's for next summer.
Yeah, it would come in, yeah, next spring.
But the first five years is almost the entire.
They're spread out over about a ten year period.
It was the first five, okay.
Yeah, the first five had. Maybe by sixty percent or something like that, but then it was. Still a pretty significant amount spread out to about ten years. And that's kind of an estimated cycle timeline of what they're trying to do. Was already seeing some adjustments just because the agreement took so long to get done, for example, from what the original timeline. But we are. Yeah, I I would say it's on track. That way. You know, now that now that they're getting it going. And again, the market pricing today will affect prices that you get. And there's different types of credits that that are, you know, various projects have. And some of those credits are are worth more than others too, and that's another differentiation as well. So. It remains to be seen exactly what we get. We put a floor price in the agreement, which is unique for them. I'm. I kind of forced that in the agreement. I just wasn't comfortable doing it without that. So there is a baseline that they've got to be. And if they don't, if they don't bring forward a proposed sale that meets that minimum floor. That's nine seventy five. Then, you know, we can, we can push on and say, no, that's not a good idea. So that's an agreement. But above that, you know, the average pricing, I think even with the latest. The the latest amendment that we did during that discussion, I think they were. Estimating around sixteen seventy five average. That's over the average of the next ten years pricing. And so. You know, they're estimating out quite a ways too.
What is it right now? Didn't I see?
It's a range. There's no absolutes there. I mean, if I was, if if you had to say what that was, I would say the range is between five and thirty dollars a ton. From what I've seen been online.
Well, I have the same, I think I have the same concern. The way I'd put it is that I'm glad we're not selling. More than that into what you've described as a low. So that, that gives me some amount of. Comfort that we're not, that this is only ten to fifteen percent.
I kind of want to know how many sales happened in the course of six months. This low is defined by how many data points? What does that look like? And I I don't, I mean, I I'm used to looking at economic data, but I've never looked at anything in a market this. Small, I don't know how small it is, but I I would kind of like to understand that a little bit more. And, yeah.
We are one of how many clients that they are.
I would, I don't have that.
It's all very proprietary. Yeah, interesting.
But all these, all of these people that we're marketing to, these, these entities that credits are being marketed to are all doing this. Involuntary systems, right? There's, there's, I don't believe there is any governmental. Mandates that maybe I'm missing some, maybe California, something, someplace, but. In most cases, this is voluntary. You know, corporations determining that's in their corporate interest to. Acquire carbon credits for their own marketing purposes or whatever. And so I don't know what a market like that looks like. Through a recession when they have other things to spend on and I I I think it's.
A lot of those companies have their own. Kind of self motivated mandates of, you know, they want to meet a certain goal, say by twenty thirty or twenty thirty five. And and the window's approaching pretty fast for some of those goals if they're going to meet it. So that at some point. If they're gonna meet them, they know they're gonna have to purchase credits to meet those types of goals. And so. Now, I don't know overall how that market is playing out. And and. You would take a fair amount of time to spend to get that information. It's not readily available. But I can certainly have some more conversation with the Climate Trust and see what I can glean if that's, if you're interested in that.
Right. You you talk about personally, these companies are all publicly held. By some ninety nine percent were publicly held. So they're making decisions based on shareholder return. And they're going to, the way that they make those decisions. You know, it it's it's. Not going to be purely altruistic. And that's. I I don't know how to put a finer edge on it, right?
The other, the thing that I guess what I'm not hearing that's. Is that perhaps there's a shift in how many people are going to be impressed. By the marketing of we have hot carbon credits. And that I think that's sort of the question that's. Out there is, is there a shift in that? Or are there people that are buying these carbon credits and the people they're marketing to? Are they feeling as they always have? Or has there been a shift in that too? And that, I mean, that would be a shift that would. I I don't really know that. I mean, I don't know how we would know that. So. But anyway, we're selling into a low. We're a tiny bit concerned and it would be nice to know a little bit more about what a low is.
Yeah, I mean, the long range. Forecast.
Is sixteen.
Usefully forecast is that they expect is, the expectation is that it will increase in future. Back to what it was or even even above that. But it is clear hindsight being twenty twenty that. You know, prices that they're getting seen today are not what they were three years ago.
Correct.
Well, maybe that's not shocking. I understand the concern and also all our, our alternative is to. Then cut down trees, right? And sell timber at three hundred acres a year potentially. And we've done the math that that being our source of revenue or selling credits. And that's also a varying number every year that varies at a ten year cycle. So. Timber sales are also lower at this time. So I have to just, you know, like trust that. Protecting our forest. For a longer period of time.
And we haven't made any change to our, 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 our cut, right?
We've just prevented anyone in the future.
Yeah, well, you haven't done that yet either, but we're in the process.
Right, we're in the process of that.
Well, it it, just so I'm clear when I ask those questions, a- as I understand it, the idea with the Carbon Trust was that. Based on our current force management plan, we would not have to alter what we were doing to take advantage of the credits. So the only thing I'm doing, I'm not saying that I feel like we should be changing course. I'm just asking questions on what they feel like the low is and Arthur's gone into it and and is it. Based on politics, is it, what is it based on? I I don't think that, it certainly doesn't mean that I'm talking about scrapping the. Thing because that wouldn't necessarily change your force management. Plan anyway.
Into this for the amount that we're spending on doing this study, right? Or what our share might be of that.
Yeah, I I think. You know, we're. The project basically. It it keeps us doing what we're doing. What it does restrict us in is that we can't, we can't harvest more than growth.
Right.
And and that, so if we wanted to accelerate harvest, let's just say you had something you wanted extra revenue for, for the next five to ten years. And you want, for whatever reason, I don't know what that is. This program would limit your ability to do that.
It would codify your current force management plan by not allowing you. At least in a certain amount of time to change it because you couldn't. Cut more.
So it, it does force us to be consistent. Which we've been pretty.
And we've, we've all talked about from policy, we're all very happy with that. Right?
Yes. Thank you. Are there any more questions? No, okay, thank you very much.
I didn't want to be really clear in the questions I was asking, not that I was looking to necessarily change the direction of going, just.
No, I think it's a great program. I I I just, it's. When we get into an economic, it's an area which involves economics, which are not as straightforward as simply. You're borrowing a million dollars in five years at an interest rate. Anything more complicated than that, we ought to. Be educated and this is an area where. Where education is limited.
It is, it is one of those places where we don't know exactly how it's gonna turn out. You know, when you take your fruit to market, you may not have a price in place.
May not.
Is that some sort of shot across the bow? You saying that you have no control over the market?
So I don't know what price I'm gonna give for timber next year. It'd be another way to say it.
Yes, we live in the same world.
Live in the same world. We're price takers, not price. Makers, yes.
This carbon agreement has some of that, except that I do have a floor. To a forty year commitment.
That's like, I'm.
Without having a fourth. I don't want to play without.
I I can set my, my own rate at whatever amount I want. It's just I may not have any customers.
Right.
Thank you. Yes.
You probably have the same ability.
Absolutely.
Customers, yes.
Yes. You.
All right.
We agree to the price, we just give you no deals. Yes.
Oh, and also we're just sending them, we're gonna inject them. All right.
And this time it really is. Yes, and I was also on vacation. So I was. In meetings with Commissioner Phil Brady, who I serve on the Mid Columbia Housing Authority Board, the Columbia Gorge Health Council Board. Mid Columbia Center for Living Board. And the Mid Columbia Housing Authority Board is worried, of course, with housing. Housing since they're mostly federally funded. So now, you know, just trying to be very mindful of revenue there. Columbia Gorge Health Council also very worried about Medicaid dollars coming into the state. Also waiting to see what Oregon leadership does regarding. The federal government's request to release information on anyone who is on Medicaid. Since we have about fifty five thousand people. In the state of Oregon who are undocumented and on Medicaid in the state of Oregon. And y'all might have heard that the state of Washington has released. Information on anyone who's on. Apple Care, I think is what it's called in Washington. So that's been a big scare so far. The state of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority, said that they will not release that information, but. Not sure how long that will hold. Mid Columbia Center for Living also depends greatly on federal funding and. The much needed Resolution Center for Drug Rehabilitation is one of the big projects where we've secured about twenty five million dollars. And we're really. Talking to our partners and staff about. You know, is it smart to start a new line of business if we aren't sure if there's gonna be enough revenue to sustain it? And trying to figure out. If that's a smart move right now, although there's huge need. And we already have some monies committed. There needs to be a decision made within the next six months or else we'll have to be. Sending money back to the state, which then might go back to the federal government, about four million dollars there. And other monies promised. And then. Chair, you did you want me to talk about? So I wasn't at the last, at our July board meeting, I watched the. Recording and Chair, you were also. Talked to me about. The We Are Immigrants work group. That Maya Yasui and.
John Boonstra.
Yeah, John Boonstra. And. You know, my initial reaction was, and thought was about the Native American community, who are not immigrants. And what their thoughts would be around a proclamation. And then, of course, you know, I was listening to Arthur's comments, like, is that really in our realm? And what should we be focusing on? We've got a lot of other priorities. And because it is Perseid, and this isn't my dad and chatting with a lot of the workers who I'm close with and. You know, I was hanging out with and I was asking them about this proclamation and and they really had no idea. What a proclamation was, and they asked what it would do for them. And if I showed up. Could, could they say, well, there's a proclamation and that would. Get rid of them. And I said, no. And so they said, well, then, does it do anything for me? Like, it's not helpful. So I I really do understand the intent. So and then I I spoke to some other folks. Actually, even at the Oregon Health Authority, who are immigrants. And. And and really, they said that it felt like it was very. Like for show, very performative. And actually, she was very upset that that's what. They kind of, that's where the energy was going. And she said that she. Just didn't want any more attention. She hasn't been speaking Spanish when she goes out and then she just is done with the attention. She doesn't want to call attention to any of it. She wants it to go away. And that. We need to like work, because I was like, well, what do you care about? Maybe we just need housing, we need a place so that we can. Live and go to school and worry, you know, have our kids have a safe place to live. That's what matters and our jobs and. So I am not in favor of this proclamation. I do understand the intent and I appreciate that we have allies to support the community. And I love seeing the signs. Appreciate that. And I just, I can't, I don't need, I don't see the need or the value in the proclamation.
Well, thank you. And I asked Commissioner Moretti to share that with us because after the meeting. After our commissioners meeting, Arthur and I met. And so I asked. Commissioner Moretti if I could share what she said. And so she had like two sentences. Share what she said, and so she had like two sentences that I shared with. That basically people would like housing and, and confidence, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that, um. You were able to say.
Yeah, thanks for chatting out.
So I had a question for you, but I actually have the answer, so I'll share it. Uh, my question is, I mean, what is the Medicaid coverage for Hutter County? What percentage of our population is under Medicaid and, uh, Georgetown University has the data for twenty-twenty-three. And says we're twenty-four point four percent, which is almost exactly the statewide average. So we're right in the middle, uh, the.
Twenty-four percent of the population.
Of the population of Hutter County.
Is on Medicaid.
On Medicaid, and, uh, that, when you look at children, it's, uh, it's. Uh, thirty-nine percent compared to thirty-six percent statewide, so we're a little bit higher. On that number, and then for, no, really, adults, I think, are a little bit lower. Yeah, we're at twenty point four in the state, average is twenty-one, so. But basically, to think about, we're basically at the statewide average, and I don't know, I, I just. Yeah. I think it's good to know that, that's a quarter of our population is, needs that program.
Yeah, now that I work for Oregon Department of Human Services, and we're serving, yeah, one in four Oregonians across the state, one million. Also, clearly, so it's Medicaid. It's a snap and ten.
So, yeah, good, that's good, then the numbers are consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Should I start talking?
You should, Commissioner, it's, it's your turn, please give us a.
Okay, so I, I have been on vacation, but I did attend meetings while I was on vacation, so, uh. Uh, uh, Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, uh. We continue to be worried about, uh, funding sources, as Commissioner Moretti described, very similar things. Uh, we did just get a contract with the state for a big chunk of our funding, and it was actually at the level that we had hoped for, so. Uh, it's a slight bit of good news, but I haven't had a chance to ask, haven't had a chance to dig into that to understand. Why, what the ramifications of that are, uh, but, uh, uh, and then onto the bridge. Um, and you probably saw, I think there was a, uh, press release that. I, I received a copy of it in my mail yesterday or today, and I don't know who that press release was sent to, but there was a press release concerning the. Um, the letting of the contract for the design of the bridge. So we approved, we, the commissioners, the, the, the commission. The Hutter White Sound Bridge Authority, Bridge Authority, that's what we're called, uh, I had to go through that to get our name right. Uh, we approved a contract with, uh, Hewitt Infrastructure West. Uh, for the design of the bridge. Uh, and that's a major milestone, uh, we have funding lined up to do that. Uh, there are some, still some specifics about the funding that, um. Will determine how far this part of the project can go, but, uh, we are into the design phase now, which is.
So Arthur, is there any idea, is there the, the money that, um. Money that the Bridge Authority has secured, is that enough for the design phase, or only enough to begin the design phase?
Uh, it, there is a cash flow question on it, so, uh, we are waiting. Uh, that the federal decision on, uh, um. Eighty-four million, is that eighty-three, eighty-four million dollars?
I did, I did see it online, and it did show that cash flow. And it seemed like it, if I read the chart correctly, that there was, uh, early in the process, there was plenty, but later in the processes where. The problem potentially could be.
Yeah, you know, e- each of the chunks of money that we get has different strings attached and different timings. So, for example, Oregon State is giving us some money out of lottery bond sales, and those bond sales happen in traditional times, uh. But don't always happen at that time, uh, and they've scheduled us for later bond sales, not earlier ones, so that funding isn't available. Certain fundings can't be spent without other fundings being available, because, you know, there are agreements to keep Oregon and Washington. Even, uh, and agreements on, uh, federal funds. Can't make up more than a certain percentage of the project, so we have to track those. Federal expenditures and match them with state sourced expenditures. The state source expenditures have to be state funds that didn't derive in some remote and un. Obvious way from federal sources, as many of the state funds do, so. All, all that's to say, it's a very com- complicated calculation, and what we figured out is that we definitely have enough money. That is allowed to be spent to do the design, but not to do it in the most efficient manner. So it forces us to stretch the design out longer than one would want to do, so it will cost more to do it. And we're hoping to get these federal funds approved, so we can then bring the design back into the obvious and rational. Uh.
Length of time.
Pattern.
More efficient.
Yeah, into the more efficient matter, because, you know, we have people working on this, you slow it down, you tell the, um. You know, you tell Hewitt that, uh, yeah, we can't work on this for the next three months, but those people will be assigned to other projects. And you're not gonna get those, them back onto your projects unless there are no projects happening anyplace. So we're trying to avoid that circumstance, and that's, that's, all that is to say that we have to be. Uh, we're very hopeful that we get, uh. The eighty-three or so million dollars freed up that was committed to us by the federal government about. Uh, was a year ago, January, so, a, a year and a half ago. Makes sense.
So there is a cliff, you're right.
There's what? Sorry, I can only reason.
There is a cliff, he said, there's.
Well, I mean, we, we will. We will get a design on itself, but it will.
Right.
Cost more, and then we will not be proceeding to construction unless we have other funding sources, which is what we're working on now.
Thank you, well understood. Anything else? You must have more.
Just far more detail than I think you guys wanted here, so I will.
There are other persons here.
Um, I, I think that was enough.
I do too. Sometimes you gotta free one.
I did, but I don't think you wanna hear all about them.
Well, you went to the meeting we had with. Um, this is almost something.
I did, I did, but you already, I, I think we heard everything we needed to on that issue. Uh, and, uh, I went to several others, but I also think that, um. Sometimes the details are not that important, and I'm waiting to see what happens.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Mancer.
Um. It's hard to follow that, no, uh, anyways, um.
I just thought I'd mix it up.
Yeah, uh, McKed Forefront, we, we have not really been giving out a lot of loans, people haven't really been applying for them. Obviously, due to the times we're in, so a lot of the meetings have been getting canceled because. I mean, there's executive meetings, but as far as the loan administrative board, there's, we have not been. We just haven't had a lot of applicants, so that's been, uh. Been a little different, it sounds like, um, I did speak with the Mount Hood Town Hall, they did get seven proposals for the solar. Grant that they have, and so they're gonna pick do those with Lindsay McClure and try to figure that out. And decide the top three and then interview from there, so that's kind of exciting, they'll get that done. Um, something interesting I did, then there was food there, I went down to the Pacific Crest Trails. Days at Cascade Locks, uh, and walked through all that.
Oh, but I always wanted.
Down on the port, it was. Very, it was, it was really cool, um. Ended up with some, my wife ended up some new gear, that, so. Yes, so, but, uh, yeah, so that's pretty much what I have for you.
Well, I was just gonna say nothing I've done in the last month involved food, but you. Bypassed me and went to Chad, so.
You can say it now.
I, I just did. Um, so, uh, just said it out of order, um. Uh, Mount Hood Econo- Economic Lions, very much like McKed, uh, has been fairly inactive due to, um, uh, a lack of. Um, yeah, um, loanable funds at the moment, so haven't done much there on, uh. On the, um, the Norcore side, um, uh, the Coalition, which has been very active in, in. Uh, in the counties and trying to do a lot of outreach for us, I, I understand, I didn't make last. Uh, they presented to the, um, Hutter Rotary, were you at that meeting? Um, um, understand it was a good meeting, so Sheriff English, um. Uh, Molly Rogers from, um, Wasco. Uh, as well as the jail commander and such, for, um, and it sounds like some really good questions and, um. You know, actually, people asking about whether public safety levy had any, um, impact on Norcore funding, so, um. Uh, been, been outreach, so I think that's good, um. Also, just operationally, um. Uh, I'd mentioned in months past, we're concerned about, um, contract that we had lost. Uh, the US Marshals Con, uh, has, but we don't have a contract, has continued to keep numbers. At a higher rate, kind of, um, covering that loss of the Benton County contract, so, uh, all's good there. Um, also on the operational, um, assessment, um. There, there's a working group, um, um, put together that, uh. Will take the next steps, um, in understanding and making recommendations to the full board and to the counties. Um, make up that board as myself, Sheriff English, um, the jail commander and. Uh, business manager, and then the Sherman and Wasco Juvenile, um, directors, so we're looking for. Uh, looking for a facilitator, um, there was an idea thrown out that, um, business manager would potentially. Facilitate that, and I think that was a bad idea, just because of any potential inherent. Um, known or unknown biases to, um, how that should move forward, so. So we're looking for that, uh, we're looking for a facilitator, um. Uh, looking first and foremost for someone that would do a good job, and secondly, someone that would be, um. Uh, inexpensive, uh, based on our current, uh, uh, budget deficiencies, so, um. That, then one little piece, I, I did talk, uh, did talk to, um. Jail commander today, apparently ICE did come through and ask for a short-term. Um, hold, uh, of which we informed them that that was not a possibility and moved on, and apparently that, um. Stayed in the parking lot next door at the property owned by, and apparently there were some. People taking pictures and such, but anyway, just in case there's any scuttlebutt within the community that. Norcore was doing anything with ICE, that is absolutely not the fact.
The answer that was given was pursuant to state law.
Correct. Correct. So. That is all I have.
Can I ask a Norcore question?
Sure.
So, um, Sophie has been trying to get me to sign up for a.
North Park Tour.
Tour, well, tour, north, or, or, and, uh. Stated that it's, uh, a contractual or statutory requirement. That each commissioner do this, does anyone know?
I think it's a. Excuse me, I thought it was only for the representative, which I have fulfilled. I don't know that it's for all, is it? I can, I can double check on that.
Check on it, if that, I recognize a part of.
Okay.
Right, so I've never done this before, so I wasn't done through my last term, uh, maybe it was an oversight, uh, but. Um, uh, number one, I trust, uh, Commissioner Weathers to do this, and number two, I simply. I'm overcommitted in number of things, number of obligatory meetings I have to go to, and.
Yeah, I, I can check on that, Sophie, but, or, or, um, the way we've been operating has just been, it's just been that, um. Representatives from the counties that have done that, have had to do that, so.
No, if there were food, that might.
Well, there is, on the twenty-eighth, the Hutter Rotary is actually storing the facility, and there, there will be lunch provided, so.
And it is, it's just identified in our, uh, charter slash admin code. That the board shall make a visit, may make a visit on an annual basis to inspect jail operations.
May and shall.
By, by choice, it is me, yeah. By choice. We may.
I, I think it's important that. That, uh, Commissioner Weathers, though, I think it's important that as many of us as can go, go, but I think, uh, at this point, I'm. Simply overcommitted.
The twenty-first that we're going, right?
So I think truly more so you're worried, as I am every time I tour, that they may not let you back out, so, I understand.
Okay. Well, I also went to the, meaning that. Arthur was at with the Soms and we ground these people, and we explained how the board felt, um. Uh, attended the R One Act meeting, which happens every other month, and we got this wonderful presentation. For those of us who are in this area who attend the R One Act meetings. From Kathy Fitzpatrick from McKed and from Corey Ziser, and they were wonderful presentations, and we were. Well-prepared, and there was no chance to actually present anything. Um, we spent the whole time hearing about the, uh, lack of funding, and it was discouraging. Um, you know, there's, unless there's money for us to be discussing spending. There's maybe not that much for the R One Act to do, so. Um, hopefully, it will get more interesting when there are more funds, so we're all waiting for the end of the month, for the twenty-ninth, when the special session happens. Um, because it was really sobering, one of the other things, I went to the same meeting on emergency management, and it's really sobering, what would happen. If this doesn't pass, the lack of. Snow plowing on Highway Thirty-five and, um. I eighty-four becoming C, I think it is, Level C, which is, there wouldn't even be, these are the levels of how much. Maintenance they do and how much, and there would be nobody, there would be no. Roads in the state that would be A and B if this doesn't pass, so.
So, I'm just trying to understand, um, what was presented to you, uh. Did they present the, what would be the case under the governor's proposal?
No, they were talking, no, and I think that, um, obviously. It's if the governor's proposal doesn't pass, so yes, this is not under the governor's proposal, and I'm sure that it probably is gonna pass, it's just interesting how. What a deep hole we've gotten in before we go.
I guess the reason I ask is because what was explained to me is that the governor's proposal is to, uh. To stop further layoffs, but we've already gone from, uh, there were twenty million people in this region. There were thirteen as of before the layoffs happened, and now we're down at six or seven, is, could you remember the number?
Well, and I think if it passes, there would be some rehires.
But, but that's not the way it was described, in the press at least. It was described as this is a, a measure to, that, that ODOT had carefully. Done a certain number of layoffs, and that they would have to do more if it, if there isn't a stopgap solution by the governor. Or from, from the governor's proposal, so that's kind of a different view, and that's worrisome. This, my understanding is that with the number of people we have in maintenance in this region right now, if there's a fire. Uh, there aren't people available to keep the road closed.
Correct. Or plow.
Or plow, we don't have to plow during a fire. So.
So, I'm, I, I'm not quite sure what the point is of telling us the situation that will be in six months if we don't, I think until. We have a special session, we know, we can speculate, I think it's better to just, we will, we will know by their next meeting. And the other thing that both, um. The administrator and I did was go meet with, uh, Rep Dexter in Cascade Locks, the day that Chad was unavailable to do that. Thanked her for supporting secure rural schools, and, um. Talked about being a hazard-prone county, but mostly it was about Cascade Locks, so we made a little presentation, but it was mostly about. And, uh, but always, it's good to stay in touch, um.
Did you discuss there the, um, this timber line?
She, uh. Two of them.
There, we all got this invitation.
Oh, she did not.
Discussion.
No, I don't think we did, no, that came up, uh, later, uh, and so I sent that to all of you. Um, so she had a different day focused on different topics as she was, um, doing the Timberline Trap.
So if any of us are doing that, we should coordinate, so we're not.
Are you doing it?
Great, I, I haven't decided yet, but we should not create a quorum.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. It's. September? That's okay, I'll look, we'll we'll look at it back. And then. I. I talked to Nate Steis from the governor's office from time to time, and he brought me up to speed on something that isn't. Directly Hood River County issue currently, but it's the. Fact that the people who've lost their homes are having a hard time feeling. Supported in rebuilding them and. They have been communicating with the gorge commission. And it's perhaps not as smooth sailing as everybody wishes it might be, because the. Need to protect all of the things that the gorge commission and the gorge. Scenic Act. Protect is not. It. It stands somewhat in the way of people rebuilding their homes quickly and particularly when they need. So that's just something on the radar that isn't in Hood River County, but. If we were to have a fire in Hood River County, which. I guess we're next, I mean, or maybe we're not, they'll find out.
Yeah, so there was. There was a specific situation in which the. Someone has put in application to read that. And Friends of the Gorge. Sent in a response, which was tone deaf. In terms of the, the. It was listing in. Excruciating detail, the number of hoops that would have to be jumped through to do this rebuilding. And it really was entirely unrelated to the specific application that was made, it was simply, it seemed like it was a warning shot that, hey. We're gonna block rebuilding and. Shortly after that, the director of Friends of the Gorge. Made a statement which was. Somewhat more conciliatory, but also. The ambiguous as to what it actually means. So I think there is some interesting politics going on here that we should all start to pay attention to this. Like you said, it doesn't.
Well, that's why I brought it up, I I wasn't gonna go into the great detail of, yeah, it was tone deaf. Well, I, yes, I had it down here toned up, I just.
I wasn't reading your notes, that was my, that was my analysis, I independently read that.
But yes, it was toned up for people that that are having trouble figuring out how they're gonna rebuild. So, yes, so it's on our radar, which is what I think it should be, we're not in a position to do anything about it, it's just something that we should know is happening. And I listened to a Creo meeting. They always discuss the. All of the energy projects going on in the eastern Oregon counties. You learn a little bit about going through the DLC process, LCV process versus the FSEC process. There was some discussion of micro gets in Oregon communities, but I think Hood River already has. Some of those, we already have the Y East one and the Mount Hood Town Hall one, and so we're kind of ahead of the curve on that. And as usual, there's always a discussion of avoided cost, which is. That the people selling the power in eastern Oregon are frustrated by. What they feel is not a very transparent process by which the. Investor-owned utilities are able to. Calculate the avoided cost, which is what they have to pay for the power. So.
They feel it's not clearly represented.
I think they think that the calculation process is not as. Transparent as it should be, and so. They suspect that it could be more. Well, that it could be more, because and and I do know from. From my experience on. The middle floor court, for instance, and what's gone on with the micro hydro is. That in the beginning, which was many, many years ago, that avoided cost was very high, but as the price of. Power that's coming from alternative sources has come down, that avoided cost has come down, so. It's a complicated, I have, I am no expert on this, it's just an interesting thing that we might want even to know something about. Went to the emergency management meeting, and in the group that I broke out into, we talked about ways to get the information. In the case of a backup on the bridge, you know, what triggers the. Information going out to the public and how soon can that happen? And Sophie Christensen read that that. Discussion. Quite skillfully, so, thank you.
You just have to ask me, if I'm sitting at my desk, I can see the bridge, I can see all the traffic on it, and I can make a phone call.
That wasn't brought up, but that's. Well, really, I mean, like.
Always says he's too busy.
Sitting at my desk.
What, what, what would trigger that? And of course, there's so many moving pieces, and it was a really good meeting, just like. Allison said. And that's it.
I wanted to issue.
I looked real quickly at the email that Allison sent and Sophie just reset it, thank you. Actually, I closed my email as I was reading it. In that email, it doesn't actually say the days, there are four specific days and the route. All it says in that email is when to RSVP, which is, by the way, Thursday.
She doesn't say when the date will be.
I I can't find it in that email. Am I missing something? So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out, because I looked at the email real quick. As a reference when someone asked what the days were.
So I would take issue with the comment that you made that we have no. Input into this. Forge Commission issue.
Oh, I didn't mean that, let me clarify it before, if if you, yeah, I didn't mean that we have. No, we shouldn't have an opinion, what I meant was because it hasn't actually happened on our. In our county yet, and so we should be well aware that it's going on and that it is an issue, because. Because it could happen in our community, and it is our gorge, and yes, I didn't mean that we didn't have.
That's fine.
Any reason to know about it or have an opinion.
I think we should all just remember that we have a commissioner that we appoint, and we are getting ready to appoint a replacement commissioner. And. Depending on the makeup and actions of the commission, we may.
And I failed to do this at the last meeting, so I will again point out that we are looking for some. Well, we 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 know that it's going to be an open.
Right, right, but there is not, no one could put in an application today.
No, but.
Just checking.
People.
They will have an opportunity shortly, and we would like.
There will be, there will be.
We certainly mentioned.
And we see at the end of the year.
And if anyone wants to, they can talk to you, they can talk to any of us about this. In the. In the immediate future, but they won't get the opportunity until we officially announce it.
Correct. All right, we're on to the consent agenda and. Let's see, Terry, you are, before we move off, I have reports. The letter in regard to support of the federal surface transportation bill.
Oh, the one from the NACO?
Yes. Do we have support of the board to sign off on that?
I think we do, has everybody had a chance to see that?
Yeah.
Okay, does everyone support our doing it?
I, yeah, we we depend on that program.
Okay. Yes, you have this, we have this. And do we need a? Do we need a motion later in new business or?
I think that gives us. All right. So if there's, is there anything else about the? The reports, okay, then we're with the consent agenda and. Let's see, are some of the extra things on the consent agenda, or are we gonna do the supplemental ones separately? And mine, of course, disappeared off my screen. Is there anything on the supplemental agenda that we want in the, oh, these have been added to the consent agenda, so this includes. The four things, the grant opportunity for the, that was the one for one of the bridges. And also the emergency management, the grant for the criminal justice, behavioral health, and the Mcked Board Representative, which is amended. So those are added to it, and is there a motion to accept? The consent agenda including the supplement.
I moved to accept the consent agenda as amended.
A second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I just have one question, and Doug is still here, I always thought that the timber sales were alphabetical and you have two Rs, what happened?
Well, the sales sold in that year were all Rs.
Oh, so it's, that's so alphabetical, okay, it's. The whole year, I thought that through a year, it went A, B, C, D, E.
Usually you only have like five to seven.
Right.
Large sale for a year.
Thank you.
So what's this year?
We just completed the Rs, and so now we're we're doing the the S's.
That are sold in twenty twenty five?
That we're selling, we we might, yeah, from now till. Next summer, the S's.
Okay.
And doesn't it matter which side of the?
Uh, that, there's a different alternation for that.
Meetings, he has.
There's there's more to the movie.
So there's a motion, like, second on.
About how we made.
I wonder, I wonder the timber sales.
I just need to abstain from letter I, since I was not here for the last meeting, okay.
Oh, that, you can still vote on minutes.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
That's.
Since I got to see him, I mean. Okay.
Because you're not attesting that you were there necessarily, just that you would.
Okay.
Right, yep.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Moretti, yes. Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Commissioner Babitz.
Yes.
Chair was, yes, motion passes, we've got. Consent is, okay. So. Let's see, we have on our work session items. We need. To accept, we were asked. To accept the county bridge capital improvement plan. And it sounded like we need a motion for adopting the. Bridge capital improvement plan. Do we need, there were three things we were asked to do, do we need motions for each of them, approved grant funding? And. Approve applying for grant funding and. Approving the Public Works Road Fund, money being transferred to capital improvement.
You just need the motion on approving the plan at this point, the grant application was in your consent agenda, and then the third item was.
Is just in general, we would like to continue that.
In making motion to adopt the county bridge condition improvement plan that was presented tonight.
We'll second that motion. And moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, I would just like to thank you again for such great. Commissioner Moretti, yes. Mr. Babitz.
Yes.
Mr. Weathers.
Yes.
Shemenzel.
Yes.
Chair Woods, yes. And the new business will be asking for a presentation from. Corey, to me.
So we are going through a process, you had an item on your July agenda. However, in order to take this process through the legal steps. We needed to bring it back to you this evening, so that you would approve the resolution in your packet. That would authorize the public works department to initiate the proceedings for the legalization of Evans Creek Drive. And offer a vision, the chair to sign a document. Did you want to say anything more on that, or you're good?
Um, no, I think we we brought it to you last month, and we. Did the wrong process, and so we're bringing it to you again. This will be brought to you a couple of times to make sure that we're fully going through the legislative or the. Statutory requirements, and so you should be seeing this every month through November, so.
So get used to it.
Yeah, we're prepared.
Yep.
So is the road just not in the. It's not in the right place, correct?
So. It's not where it says it is.
So it's in the right place, we just need to formalize to say it is. Anytime there's federal funding that's involved, we have to verify the right of way is where the right of way is.
So it is in the right of way, where, I mean, it's, it is surveyed into the right of way, it's in the right place.
That is the process that we're going through, to make sure that the survey and the documentation match. Where the actual road is.
Because. Obviously, in Hood River County, we have a lot of roads that are. As traveled are different than the right of ways.
Correct.
But if we move the culverts, we have to. Get it right.
Yeah, because that covert is. Paid for with federal funds.
So I would just like to make a note that I feel like. Not necessarily on your behalf, but on the planning's behalf, when we're looking at a lot of these houses that are going in. That. Somebody is looking at the as road traveled versus the right of way. I know of. Different locations that. Houses are going to be put in and as were traveled, if the road was ever extended. But they fit within the outline of the right of way. But if you. If you were to drive the road versus the survey, it is. Very different.
If someone goes to planning with a proposal to put a structure in a right of way, in a planted, in 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 a. Right away that exists on the map.
It doesn't always match the road.
No, in front of my house, it doesn't, so I I know that this is a very common thing.
And it causes a lot of conflicts.
What we're doing here is, is we're. Putting the official right of way where the road is, right?
I'm just making. I'm I'm just making a note that I I know for sure that there's a lot of roads not in the right places, and houses are being built. Where that as road travel, if it was continued, would go right to the middle of the house.
We don't, I mean, have we ever taken action, or I I can't say that we've never done it, but. It's, it does, we're not going to say move the road to match the map.
No.
Right?
So I think.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah, so. A road legalization process takes time, and yes. Having the road not where it says it's going to be, or where it says it is. Causes conflict. I don't know if we can do it during the planning process. Owners or constituents can request a legalization process through you guys, and that's, that's kind of. The normal process is somebody would come and say, hey, I want my road legalized. And then you would tell public works to do this work. It's generally not the case where we have a road project. Hopefully, we already have the right of way when we're doing a road project, but. We've had roads that we've had to legalize, AGA Road was one of those.
Do you know, Post Canyon Road, we initiated a legalization process on that, do you know where that is?
Ongoing.
Any, I mean, it was two, three years ago, do you have any guess?
No. No. We also have one on Neal Creek Road.
I remember that.
Are we still looking on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, they take, it takes years, but. I just, not for today, but just some appreciation for. Is anyone working on, or does it just have to sit for certain, is it required to cook for a certain amount of time, or or what, what we're waiting on, and those would be helpful.
Yeah, so. This one in particular, it's being put in because of the ODOT project.
Right.
It also has some. Think MFID work that's happening in conjunction with that, and so the property owners. Are really supportive of this change. Anytime that a property owner has consternation about where the road is, it just drags out the process. So I know that. Post Canyon Road may have some challenges with the property owners. Adjacent, and so we want to make sure that we have. Everything in place, we also didn't have surveying, so we had to contract that out. Neal Creek, Leftley, Wasco County hired a deputy surveyor, surveying tech. And so they're helping with that process, so that's gonna be brought in-house. You think that one's gonna be easier, it's still gonna take some time. But this one's going.
By the, by the landowner, right?
Yeah, but this one's going a lot smoother, because the property owners are all all supportive of this project. They've all been contacted by ODOT, ODOT's really leading the the survey. They have a great surveyor that's doing the work, our surveyor was able to sign off on that pretty easily, so.
Right. So let's see.
Do we have a motion now?
No, we don't have a motion yet. We need a motion to approve the resolution. Authorizing the public works department to initiate proceedings for the legalization of Evans Creek Drive, authorizing commissioners to sign the document. Ask the motion they need.
Whose district is this?
It's mine, uh I move to approve the resolution authorizing the public works department to initiate proceedings for. The legalization of Evans Creek Drive.
And authorizing commissioners to sign.
Oh, Doug, oh, yeah, authorizing the commissioners to sign the document.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded, was there any more discussion? Commissioner Murray, yes, Commissioner Babitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Wethers.
Yes.
Commissioner Munzer.
Yes.
Chair Woods, yes. All right, and with that, we are um now going to enter into, is there anything else, people we? You can. We will enter into executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety two six zero two E. To conduct deliberations that negotiate real property transactions. Once the executive session is complete, the board will come back into regular session to adjourn the meeting.
So before we go into.
And.
I'm sorry, we've done it yet? Is there a question?
Have we paused the?
Yes.
Okay.
So uh what so it seemed unusual is that in this case, there's a title to the transaction is.
That is unusual and it would not be the case.
Okay.